I'll order. Just time on last, Mr. Smith later in the morning. Okay. Let's pray. Governor, thank you this day and thank you this time for when you come again and conduct county's business. We just pray for your guidance and that you will be done in all decisions that are made. We'll continue to ask that you do with those that are sick. With COVID right now, we do with those families that are losing loved ones. We pray for law enforcement or EMS or 911, all those that are on the front lines each and every day. We just pray that you can keep them safe, Lord. Just thank you once again for the opportunity that we have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have real call.
My folks.
Here.
Tracy McDaniel.
Here.
Tim Spencer.
Here.
Ray Little.
Here.
Lamond Jackson. David Smith.
Here.
Elliot Hughes.
Here. Next, I need approval of minutes of public hearing, regular meeting two one, twenty twenty one. Somebody say. For this motion, second, any further discussion about the minutes? If not, all in favor, please indicate, show hands, please. Next, I need approval of the claims for Turkey County in the amount of three hundred and twenty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars in judicial claim. Some move. Thank you. For this motion and second, any further discussion about the claims? If not, all in favor, please indicate, show hands. Next, I need a motion for adopt agenda. Somebody say. For this motion and second, any further discussion about the agenda? If not, all in favor, please indicate, show hands. Next, we have employee recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're pleased to have with us three folks from the South Carolina National Emergency Number Association. I want to introduce Mike Flynn, who's the president of the South Carolina branch of the NINA. He's also the Spark County 911 Director. Also with us tonight is Vic Williams, who is with Carolina Recording Solutions. And Brandon Peeler, who is, of course, our deputy director. But Brandon is the Northern Region Director for the South Carolina NINA. And I'm going to ask Mike if he will come forward and has a presentation tonight for you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Council. Thanks so much for having us. It's an honor to present awards to employees who are as outstanding as this person. I would like to ask Matt Lawson to come up.
Jim Cook, Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. On behalf of the Development Board members, Chairman James Moss, Jim Cudd, Doug Hubbard, W.B. Cook, Anna Moss, Armenia Gardner, Jim Thompson, Bill Surratt, and Senator Harvey Peeler, we would like to thank you all for the support that you've shown us over the past year. We would also like to thank the partners that helped make it possible for us, our private partners, City of Gaffney Board of Public Works, Broad River Electric Co-op, Duke Energy, Wells Fargo, First Piedmont, AT&amp;T, Piedmont Natural Gas, York County Natural Gas Authority, United Community Bank, Spectrum Business, and Bank of America. It wasn't that long ago, this time one year ago, we were coming off a record-setting 2019. In February last year, Adams Old Castle announced a new project at the Sunny Slope industrial site. Then COVID hit along with an ever-increasing divisive national presidential election. Phrases like "the new normal," "unprecedented times" were commonplace. Requests for information came to a halt, and frankly, the RFI pipeline at our office was dormant from April to June. However, we were busier than ever, coordinating information flow between companies with local, state, and federal COVID-19 guidelines. Our office was flooded with calls and emails from companies to determine how to remain essential. Online meetings, PPE, checking individual temperatures became routine business. But our local companies not only survived, some actually excelled. Many added new workers, some companies pivoted making and began making new products. Our office adjusted as well. We remained open, did lots of Zoom, Microsoft Teams, WebEx meetings with South Carolina Department of Commerce, upstate alliance, brokers, site consultants, and private developers. County visits slowly returned with physical meetings late that summer, and in essence, shortly after that, we had three major announcements. TTI out in Meta Creek Industrial Park announced $67 million project with 100 new jobs and also adding 500,000 square feet to their existing facility. Adams Old Castle announced $14 million capex project along with 31 jobs, and Sticker Mule, a small project out on Huntington Drive, $1 million and 15 jobs. So, for a total capex of approximately $90 million and 160 jobs. On the professional development side, Deputy Director Ken Moon succeeded in the completion of the Advanced Economic Development Leadership Program administered by the University of New Mexico, Southern Miss, SMU, and Clemson University, and graduated as a master practitioner in November, got his plaque today. Our partner Duke Energy provided his scholarship for this prestigious program. Job creation remained solid. Unemployment rates did skyrocket early in the COVID season, back in April, May, and June, but this was primarily in the hospitality and service sectors. By year end, we were back down to around 5% unemployment. Workforce continues and remains our top site selection factor concern. Frankly, it has for the past several years. There are still good companies in our county that are looking for good workers to work. Product development remains a close second for our economic development site selection factors. I-85 progress continues. I think this June will be the three-year mark on the southern side of the interstate in Cherokee County, and that's when it was supposed to be completed. We've all driven down the road and see we're lucky if we're halfway there, so it's going to be several more years before that's complete. Sewer line extension, we've all talked about that, seen in the paper. We're running about a five-mile, $6 million sewer line out to the Sunny Slope properties, which is just something I've dreamed about, and it's finally coming to fruition, and we hope to have that done by the end of the year, and it's already generated a lot of activity in the Sunny Slope site. Our spec building, we did a little bit of sprucing up last year, we did a little spring cleaning. We gave it a new coat of paint, fans, to reduce the moisture in the building, lights, and a few other things to really make that building look good right now. And quite frankly, it's doing its job. It brings economic development allies such as site consultants, brokers, and other companies into our county. And when we get them on the ground, that's when they see us at work. That's when they see the economic development and the relations it has with the county administrator's office, our finance office, treasurer's office, auditor's office. Permitting, which is one of our wild cards, when we tell them how fast we can permit and how inexpensive it is compared to other counties, it's a real eye-opener for most projects that come in here. GIS office. They see our relationships with I-Square and Spartanburg Community College. I remain encouraged with our relationship with I-Square, and I would say that it's one of the finest, the most unique technology centers in the state. Spartanburg Cherokee County, Spartanburg Community College Cherokee County campus, I would put their Center for Advanced Manufacturing and Industrial Technology, their Canet Building, I would put it up against any similar training facility in the world. It's that good. They see our relationships that we have with Piedmont Natural Gas, York County Natural Gas, AT&amp;T, Charter Spectrum, Duke, Broad River Electric, and especially with City of Gaffney Board of Public Works. They see the relationships we have with our delegation, and quite frankly, they're amazed that we can pick up the phone and call our state senior senator or one of our two members of the House of Representatives and ask them to help us if we have any issues with some folks down in Columbia to help us get it done. So getting the right people to our county is vitally important, and nothing does it better than our spec building. I'll end by saying I'm excited about our future. We took a body blow from COVID-19 last year and survived. We're still not out of the woods yet with this terrible disease, as evidenced by where we're having our annual meeting this year. This year has already been busy for us, and we have several projects imminent. We've all known for years that Cherokee County is an ideal location on I-85, and it's really starting to come together. New housing projects are being developed. Private industrial developers used to give me a call as they went up and down I-85. Now we have several working on viable projects in our county. We are growing at a very manageable rate, and the county's vision 2037 is preparing us for a prodigious future, and if we do all these things, Cherokee County will be poised for great things to come. I sent you a copy of our annual report in your read-ahead packages last week. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion for Mr. Cook?
Jim, thank you for what you do. Congratulations on getting your degree or... Larry, thank you for your positive reports on economic development. It helps, yeah, you, Larry. Your positive reports on economic development let other investors and stuff look at this county and let those positive things are going on. So thank you for your positive reports on economic development. I read them, and there are big things going on, and I look forward to what happens in Cherokee County. So thank you for what you do at the economic development. Mr. Moss, your board, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'd just like to say thank you, Jim, also Mr. Moss, and congratulations, Ken, and thank you for what you do, because we know without y'all we wouldn't have what we have today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution. This is number 2021-02. This is calling for a public hearing to be held on the diminution of the boundaries of Spartanburg Sanitary Sewer District, South Carolina, in Cherokee County, South Carolina, providing for the publication of the notice of such public hearing and generally approving of other matters related thereto. Per this motion, it is seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate yourself. Next, we have the second reading of orders number 21-2021-02 to create the Blacksburg Special Tax District, and the purpose for which it is created, to establish the Blacksburg Special Tax District as administrative division of Cherokee County, and to impose a tax levy of not more than 15 mils annually on all property located within the district. Per this motion, it is seconded. Any further discussion on this second reading? If not, all in favor, please indicate yourself. Next, we have the first reading of orders number 2021-03, authorizing the diminution of the boundaries of Spartanburg Sanitary Sewer District, South Carolina, in Cherokee County, South Carolina, providing for the publication of notice of these said findings and authorization, and generally approving other matters related thereto. Per this motion, it is seconded. Any further discussion on this first reading? If at all, in favor, please indicate yourself. Next, we have...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give you an update on the COVID vaccination process that we had here at the county. We did a drive-through clinic last week. It went very well, went very smoothly for those who are getting their second doses. We kind of used that as a test run, because we believe at some point when it gets opened up to the general public, that we will be tasked by DHEC with administration of mass administration of vaccines for COVID. DHEC is already having us submit plans and so forth, so we learned a lot from our first round, but we think what we did last week certainly worked. So I just want to thank, I'm going to bring some ladies in next week who helped us, but Ginny Parnell, Kaylee Cash, Ciara Walker, and then Rick's office, Beverly Carver, and Ms. Teresa, they were tremendous. We couldn't have done it without them. And of course, Thomas Beam, who is the pharmacist and owner of Medicine Mart. What they were able to do was tremendous. I know several of y'all came through and saw them at work, so we just wanted to thank them and just bring you up to speed on that. Also, received an email, and I put it out on our, on the county's Facebook page, there are some testing sites that's being set up around the county at random places. I know there's going to be one at Concord Baptist Church, and I want to say there's one at, I can't remember the other one, but I posted it on Facebook. Yeah, Broad River, and I think there's been some vaccination sites at Broad River and so forth. So anyway, just, we're kind of keeping abreast of that as it goes. We're hoping that the number of vaccines available continues to increase. Wanted to mention to you broadband and want to tell you what's going on there. Mr. Hilliard did a very nice piece on us in The Ledger that you guys are not letting the long-range plan sit on a shelf, and we're actually using it. We have gotten a grant from Silent Tears, which is an organization that works on behalf of battered women and ladies and children who are in danger. They have gotten behind our broadband effort, because they believe that in some of our underserved areas, that there are some folks who, if they had access to broadband, might be more accessible for resources for them and some other things. They have given us a $5,000 grant to do a broadband community champion training that we're doing. We've included the hospital in this, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, Jim and Ken are involved. The town of Blacksburg has been involved, or is going to be involved. As we look at broadband, and I don't have a map in here, but if you picture the Blacksburg side of the county and basically come diagonally down into the west, and the southern part of the county is our underserved areas for broadband. And we are working diligently and looking at different technologies in those areas, looking at some short-term possibilities and also some long-term possibilities. We had some very good meetings last week with the Palladium Group that they set up. We've got another follow-up this week with a local organization that we believe can bring a lot to the table. So just wanted to let you all know that that is an ongoing effort that we are working on, and there's a lot of promising things out there that's being put forth. So anyway, I wanted you all to know that. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brighton. Any appointments? Not any new order of the business. We stand adjourned.
See you, Lyman. See you, guys.